All right. Good evening, everyone. I hereby open the regular session of the Springfield Planning Commission. Sarah, can we have a roll call, please?
Sandy, I think you should be doing that.
Oh, Sandy, are you, you want to do a roll call for us? Sorry, I apologize.
Sir, Chair Buck.
Present.
Vice Chair Schmuck.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Driggs.
Present.
Commissioner Greenwell.
Here.
And Commissioner Weber.
Present.
All right. Are there any adjustments to the agenda tonight? I see you shaking your head no, Sandy. Is that that affirmative? No? Okay. That's an affirmative. There are no adjustments to the agenda. Okay, so now we're going to set the Pledge of Allegiance. Those of us in attendance can, in attendance in person, please recite the pledge. Those online are muted.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. States of America. Government of the states. On condition, their valid individual. The individual's role.
All right. I'd like to call for the approval of the minutes from March 18th, 2025. Are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? Hearing none, I hereby approve the minutes from March 18th, 2025. Okay, now we are at our section for business from the audience. So we'll now take business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the Planning Commission, not otherwise on our agenda tonight. Later in the meeting, we, there will be a hearing with the opportunity to talk and address the Planning Commission on a specific topic of the proposed flood code amendments. But this, this time is for anything other than that. If you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press nine by phone, or if you're here in person, please fill out a card. When called upon, you'll have three minutes to speak. Sarah, do we have any cards for this?
And not for business in the audience, but there are members of, in the audience and also online.
Got it. But no, no business from the audience.
No, but you'll want to read it, the raise hand feature to instruct people.
All right, I just did. But I will, I'll read it again. If you'd like to speak, please, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joined by telephone. If you're hereby in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name, mailing address, and keep your comments to three minutes. That's okay. Reading it twice is never a bad thing. All right. So no business from the audience, so let's move on to our floodplain pickham code amendments. Haley.
All right, let's make sure everybody can hear me. Yes, okay. Good evening, Planning Commission. And this is meeting number four this month. I've been very busy with you guys. Hopefully, this will be a quick one and we'll get in and out, but of course, we have some public testimony tonight we'll be hearing from, so bear with me. I know this is a continued hearing from the March 4th date. So tonight, I'd just like to cover, you know, why we're asking to potentially close the public hearing and reopen at a later date. Tonight, in your packet, there was just the agenda item summary and public comments. As far as public comments, new public comments from the previous public hearing, there was only one that was received on Springfield Oregon Speaks. That is in attachment one on page two, and that was from Brian Myring. We received that on March 10th, and those were some recommendations for amendments to the model code language in particular. So as far as what was covered in your agenda item summary, I'm just going to summarize that real quick and then just give a little bit more information or clarification. So since the March 4th public hearing, the League of Oregon Cities advocated on behalf of several cities at a visit to Washington DC. They asked for a timeline realignment to urge FEMA to revert to the original environmental impact statement, which would give communities the necessary information and time to implement effective and compliant measures. They, they asked for technical assistance and funding to communities, and they encouraged FEMA to collaborate with local communities and stakeholders. We are working on responses in the staff reports to public testimony that was received on March 4th. That included the clear and objective standards, measure 49 claims, the buildable lands inventory, consequences of noncompliance with the Pickums, cost recovery for the mandate, and DLCD's involvement. The findings have not been completed, which is why we are asking to close the hearing and come to you when we have additional clarification to provide at a later date. The city's attorney's office is also working to address the Pickum options and non-Pickum ESA compliance options, and if needed, Christina will provide a little clarification on that tonight as well. The federal litigation filed by Oregonians for floodplain protection was transferred from Washington DC to Oregon. But at this time, of course, that will delay the timeline on a ruling regarding a preliminary injunction. So for these reasons, as I mentioned earlier, we're asking to close the public hearing and reopen the hearing once we've completed our analysis. Again, at that time, we'll renotice the public hearing in the Chronicle around City Hall and to those who provided testimony or signed up on Springfield Oregon Speaks to receive notice. So just to clarify, the findings are just not ready for this project. In particular, our buildable lands inventory and then analysis that was needed to review that. I can give you an estimate of how many properties we were looking at, somewhere between 50 and 70 individual parcels that needed to be analyzed. How the floodplain in particular was impacting those parcels. So that takes a lot of time, effort. Mostly, we were looking at the legislative history that we saw, we noticed some discrepancies between the maps that were written for the kibble many, many years ago and potentially what the designation would be now. For instance, you might see some developed properties that would be considered redevelopable or redevelopable properties that are now developed or vacant parcels that are now developed or redevelopable. Things change, obviously. Development occurs or doesn't occur. And so it's really important to have an updated inventory of those economic projections, I guess you could say, and how it would relate to floodplain development. So I, any questions? I'm available for. Christine is available for, and we're happy to help answer them.
I want to throw one out there. I just want to clarify and make sure I'm understanding and kind of change the language a little bit for the public. So what I hear you saying is two, is a few things. First of all, what we're really looking at isn't, isn't the flood map itself, but if we adopt this code amendment, what the impact on those properties would be in terms of your, your ability to develop it? And, and or, and or what the opportunity and limitations potentially would be on selling it in the future. So just kind of the flexibility of what those parcels are. And due to this process, what we're finding is we don't know yet the full impact of what that's going to look like. And so what we really need to do is take a little more time before we do anything, take a step back and say, okay, what's, what's this going to look like? And we're not under any current pressure to, at this exact moment, to get this done. The timeline's being reevaluated. So what we're really doing is saying, hey, let's, let's take a step back, make sure what we're doing. We know what the impact is for Springfield, so we can bring that clearly to the community when the time makes sense. And so closing, so your quest to close the, the hearing is really, let's close the, the public comment for now, so that we can kind of deal with what we've got in front of us. And once we have a sense of that, once we know what the state is going to do and the timeline is there, we can come back to the table and say, okay, now we have more information. Let's resume this conversation.
Correct. An excellent analysis.
All right. What do you guys got? Commissioner Driggs?
I don't have any questions or comments.
Okay.
Pat? Does this postponement put property owners at any further risk to lose their federal-backed flood insurance? Or does it delay it? It says we're delaying it.
There are, so to lose federal-backed flood insurance would require the city to be suspended from the National Flood Program, which would which a number of steps would have to happen first. And so if any of the, in the unlikely event any of those steps started to happen, there would be ample time to come back and adopt something that would prevent that from happening. The first step would be initiation of a community assistance visit with the city. And there's one person that does that work for the state of Oregon through a contract with FEMA. I would be very surprised if FEMA is hiring additional employees right now to do that work in Oregon. And then even once a community, even if a community assistance visit was initiated in Springfield, there would be timelines and requirements that we would be notified of what specific actions we would need to take before anyone would be at risk. So, I mean, yes, this could, in theory, there's a very small risk this could hasten that, make that more likely to happen or, or happen earlier. But given that we're not the only jurisdiction in Oregon slowing down on this, I think it's highly unlikely there would be any adverse impact for, to flood insurance policies.
Haley, I think we're, we're good here from the commissioners. Thank you very, very much. So at that, I'd like to now open the public hearing regarding the floodplain code amendments. If you would like to speak and you filled out a card, if you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom, press nine. If you're joined by phone, if you're here in person, please fill out a card to speak, present it to Sarah and our commission, our planning commission assistant. And when called to speak, state your name, your mailing address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Sarah, do you have cards for us?
Yes, I sure do. Ms. Beamer? Could you please come up? Please state your address and, yeah.
Good evening. I'm Alicia Beamer. The chief administrative officer with Sacred Heart Riverbend at 333 Riverbend Drive in Springfield. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. First, we really want to thank all of you for your thoughtful consideration and deliberation during this really complex matter. I'm here tonight to provide an overview of Riverbend Services and the impact on the community, both presently and in the future. I have a couple of my colleagues who are also going to provide statements as well. Thanks to the invaluable support from the city of Springfield, we successfully opened Riverbend in 2008, a trauma level two hospital providing a high level of specialized and complex medical procedures that have become a vital pillar for not only the city of Springfield, but it's also one of the largest, it is the largest hospital between Portland and San Francisco. We are proud to have been recognized as one of the top 10 most beautiful hospitals in the nation. In addition, our beautiful facility has also been recognized by multiple organizations for exceptional surgical care, cardiology, stroke treatment and procedures, and inpatient rehabilitation services, just to name a few. These accolades reflect our commitment to delivering high-quality health care and improving outcomes in a welcoming and healing environment. Our dedicated teams work tirelessly to provide the best possible care, ensuring our patients receive comprehensive support throughout their treatment journeys. Riverbend is quite frankly out of space where we recently dedicated our last shelled inpatient space as we continue to expand services. By 2028, between the additional inpatient beds opening up at Riverbend as a result of current and planned construction and our 42-bed inpatient rehab hospital for physical rehab and traumatic brain injuries, and our proposed 96 inpatient psychiatric hospital, we'll be adding 196 inpatient beds to Lane County. According to the projections from the Census Bureau, by 2050, the American population is over the age of 65 will reach 83.9 million. That's nearly double the number of seniors that we had in 2012. This significant demographic shift underscores the need for more inpatient capacity to meet the healthcare demands for aging population. Knowing this helps guide us as we plan for our future and recognize the importance of preventing situations that landlocked us like we experienced at Sacred Heart University District or Sacred Heart Medical Center. Therefore, as we proactively seek opportunities for growth and to effectively support our community's evolving health needs, it's crucial for us to preserve space in the outlying areas of the Riverbend campus for potential expansion as the market for these services continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was impressive. Right on time.
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Sarah, who else do we have to hear from tonight?
Grady Lehman. Please come up.
Thank you, Grady.
Good evening. I'm Grady Lehman. I'm the Director of Planning, Design and Construction for Peace Health at 1200 Hilliard Eugene. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to discuss the properties around Riverbend Campus and the potential impacts of the FEMA regulations that would be imposed. When Peace Health first purchased this property in Springfield, we had a vision, a hundred-year vision to provide excellent healthcare to the overall community. Alicia briefly discussed our new development, very exciting new development going on in Springfield, and those projects help continue our vision. Alicia helped explain that Riverbend is currently out of space. Any future growth for the hospital will require us to build outward. This outward expansion will require additional land, some of which falls within the floodplain floodways. We also recognize the growing need for additional housing and affordable housing in the community. Peace Health currently owns a large portion of land that would be ideal for future residential development. Most of this property also sits within the floodplain floodways, making it very difficult to develop. This proposed amendment would increase the development costs and reduce the billable amount of land. We look forward to future expansions at Peace Health and new developments, and we are asking that you consider closing the hearing or taking no further action. Thank you.
Thank you, Grady.
Ms. Miller, would you please come up and, and please give your address and name?
Good evening. I am Tamara Miller, System Director of Property Management for Peace Health. I'm at 123 International Way in Springfield. I am reading the following statement on behalf of Michael Reader. Dear Springfield Planning Commissioners, I represent Peace Health. You will recall that I testified at the first public hearing on the city's legislative proposal to adopt code amendments to the floodplain ordinance based on the direction of FEMA. Since I am unable to testify in person or remotely this evening due to unanticipated travel, I provide the following written testimony for your consideration, in addition to my earlier written and public hearing testimony. I urge you to delay making any recommendation to the city council that would amend the city's floodplain ordinance. The current ordinance protects life and safety for the affected properties, their owners and residents, and the community. The proposed amendments are not being put forward to protect structures, life and safety, but solely to abide by the current FEMA commands that are consequence of litigation regarding endangered species. However, protecting endangered species is not within the statutory authority of FEMA, and it is likely that FEMA, either through litigation or administration, will not implement the Oregon BiOP. Therefore, it is premature and unwise to push forward local code amendments in an attempt to satisfy a policy that is legally suspect and politically vulnerable. The likely consequences of adopting these proposed amendments are dire. These proposed amendments would place an enormous burden not only on the city's largest employer, but on a multitude of landowners in the community who may not have the ability to mitigate, mitigate the effects of the proposed amendments. The consequences to landowners may be that the proposed amendments would wipe out any economically beneficial use of the property, effectively taking property without compensation. Not only would this be unfair and unwise, but would potentially expose the city to claims for compensation that would have to be paid for by all of the city's residents. This is unnecessarily and potentially very expensive. Lastly, the consequences of adopting the amendments are not yet fully known. However, it is safe to predict that a significant amount of currently buildable employment and residential land will no longer be available for development, straining an already limited supply of land for the city's future health and growth. Please take no action on the proposed amendments. Respectfully, Michael M. Reader. Thank you.
And I'd like to request anybody that's interested in giving public comment online, please raise your hand. I don't believe we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak. These are the only cards I have.
Thank you, Sarah.
Chair, there are no raised hands online.
All right. Thank you for those who you shared with us tonight. We certainly appreciate the time and feedback. It's a lot. So so sorry, I apologize. I lost my place here. Yep, I think we're at Assistant Attorney.
No, you, you're at the questions for, if you've done questions and you don't have any questions or answers, then you would read the part that that is in the, sort of the middle.
The city staff?
Yes, that part.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking we were at. I wasn't sure if, so apologize for, for that, everyone. So city, city staff would like time to prepare for a future discussion with the, the commission about our options to address the Pickums. Is this, so if we read this, there's an opportunity for discussion whether we want to approve closing the hearing or not, correct, Sarah? Correct, Christina?
No, you would discuss whether you, I mean, you can discuss whether you want to close the hearing first. But if you do want to close the hearing, then you would read, we're not closing the hearing. You don't have to have a motion and second to close the hearing.
Okay. Before, before I read this and we close the hearing, I just want to check in with the Planning Commissioners, make sure that there's nobody that wants to give any further comment before we, we move to close the hearing at staff's request. Commissioner Driggs, is that a no?
That's a no.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. All right. City staff would like time to prepare for future discussion with the commission about our options to address the Pickum. We are now closing the Planning Commission public hearing, but we may decide to reopen the hearing at a later time once more information is available. Will the Assistant Attorney please explain what will happen with the hearing and the record if we reopen the hearing or do not reopen the hearing?
So this matter will remain active. And at least for the time being, if you, since the hearing is closed, folks that are interested in the matter can continue to send written comments to Haley. Their, her contact information is on the webpage for the Pickums Project. The Springfield Oregon Speaks portal won't stay open. There won't be a place there to go and enter comments. When staff are ready to bring this back to you, we could bring it back, Haley could bring it back to you in a work session and have you talk through some of the information and then decide if you want to reopen the hearing at that time or could move right into a, into just scheduling a reopened hearing and you would open that hearing on that day the same way that you would open a brand-new hearing. If you reopen the hearing, then any of those written comments that come in between now and that hearing date would automatically, like, would, that would need to come to you for your consideration. If you don't reopen the hearing, then I think Haley has discretion of sort of when to cut off comments coming to you for deliberation and, and probably what I would expect include everything submitted up to a certain date, but as she's preparing that packet. And then from that time on, anything would go to city council. So any, you know, written comments that are received now may come to you or they may be held and sent to city council, kind of depending on what the next steps are. Because this is a legislative matter, we don't need to announce, you know, a date and time certain tonight. But the, any future public hearing will be posted in advance on Springfield Oregon Speaks. I would expect that it would be on the Pickums webpage, and then staff can also provide a notice to anyone who submitted comments with a, with contact information. So even though it's not a legal requirement, I expect that Haley's going to reach out to those folks so that anyone who wants to come in, make additional comments can do that.
Thanks. So thank you for that, Christina. What I, what I took away is we're going to do, the city's going to go back and they're going to do the work they need to do to really fully explore the impact and, and the options. And when this comes back for consideration, the intention is to make sure that that's, that's known. Those that have expressed concern and have spent the time to come and talk with us can expect to be in the loop when that happens and have the opportunity to kind of weigh in at that time with the additional information. So I appreciate all the work the Planning Department has done and not, not only Sarah, but yourself, Christina. Appreciate all, all the things you've done for us. And so with that, we will now hear business from the Planning Commission. Are there any reports of council actions?
Chair, a report?
Excellent.
From the March 10th City Council Session, city staff provided a really comprehensive and quality presentation on the city of Springfield's housing strategies to meet current housing needs. It was a great presentation and is available on YouTube. I encourage folks to check it out. Thank you.
All, all right. Well, thank you very much. Our, our counselors have been busy with a lot of things. So appreciate everything they do for us. Any business from the Development Public Works Department? Sandy?
Good evening. My name is Sandy Delson. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager, but I do think Haley had something that she wanted to talk about, although I don't. Yeah, okay, just making sure.
Thank you, Sandy. Nice segue. So as you know, I brought you a community engagement plan on the 18th of last month. At that time, the project was called Housing Related Code and Plan Update. We've gone through a rebranding process. We've worked with our Communication Department, other members of our Comprehensive Planning Department to rebrand the project. The new name, just the name of the project is now Housing and Design Initiative Code and Plan Update. I know that's a little bit of a mouthful, but we wanted to be very clear, kind of in the name of the project, what it was about, as opposed to housing-related, could be anything related to housing. So we hope that that name works for the Planning Commission and council moving forward and our engagement documents. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I think it's good with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I definitely appreciate the, the rebranding to just make the intention clear. I think anytime we can make these, make what we're doing clear to the public, it's, it's helpful because there's so much that goes on that the public doesn't necessarily know about in terms of, you know, the, the processes and things like that. So in terms of, you know, the processes and things like that. So I appreciate that very much.
Oh, and if I may segue, just because I have your time. So we are actively recruiting for a technical advisory committee right now. Our application is live on the website. So if you have any members of the audience who are listening now or have any friends or family or colleagues, whatever, who may be interested in applying, please check out the website on Springfield Oregon speaks. Like I said, the application is live and we'll be coming back to you on May twentieth to get your approval of those technical advisory committee members.
All right, thank you. Any further business from the planning department?
The only other thing I have is to let you know that we will have a meeting on April fifteenth from April Fool's to Tax Day. Your anyway, it will be your third time on the Highland site plan for the RV storage. So that hearing has been continued. So you will convene at seven o'clock that, I'm sorry, special hearing time of six o'clock. So it will be a special meeting instead of the regular hearing time at seven, it will be at six o'clock, but it is a public hearing.
Excellent. No work session that night?
No work session.
Fabulous. Thank you. All right. If that concludes our business.
We actually postponed or closed the public hearing on, but I was asleep.
Yes.
You did. Yes. We, it wasn't, a motion wasn't required. We just kind of did it. That's why I paused in the middle of that and says, does anybody else have any? Because as soon as I read that, it closed it. All right.
Could I just throw out one thing? Process, I'm not sure, but what we heard earlier today from from Haley and like, I would like to encourage us to look at, maybe this is where we're going anyway, but I'd like to encourage us that we we get the additional information that we have a work session before we go to public hearing. That's my two bits worth.
All right. Excellent. It's a good suggestion. I'm imagining that's Haley's intention. Because she loves hanging out with us so much. All right. With that, we are adjourned.